Live event should be starting now. We are now live. Madam Chair, could you please call the meeting to order?
Okay, it is 6:30. I call this meeting of the Arapahoe County Planning Commission of October 6th, 2020 to order, and we will now call the roll.
Chair Rick?
Present.
Tim Latsis?
Present.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
I see a finger up.
He was using, he was using the mute button. Commissioner Saul?
Present.
Commissioner Sabe?
Present.
Commissioner Wolman?
Present.
All Commissioners are present this evening. Good evening, Planning Commission, staff, citizens, and guests. I am Jason Reynolds with Arapahoe County Planning, and I will be serving as the moderator for this evening's online meeting of the Planning Commission. We are streaming this meeting on our website, arapahogov.com, and the agenda will be handled in the same way it would be handled for a regular in-person meeting. Tonight's meeting does not include any public hearing items, so we will not be taking any public comment. However, you can stream the meeting on our website or call in to listen. Please note that the website broadcast is delayed by 20 to 30 seconds, so if you'd like to listen to this meeting live, please use the call-in number. To listen on the phone, call 719-569-5048, and when prompted, enter the conference ID number, which is 522-964-309, followed by the pound sign. Chair Rick, please proceed with the approval of the minutes.
Okay, we have one set of minutes to approve from the September 15th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, and if there are any changes to the minutes, please include those changes in your motion. Are there any changes that need to be brought up before we accept the motion?
Yes, this is Commissioner Wolman. I do have, I do have some. On page two, eight lines up from the bottom. It says, "Mr. Bradley." That should be Ms. Bradley.
Okay.
The next correction is on page three. It's six lines down from the top. The sentence starts, "Ms. Bradley," should be stated, the proposed route we shown. And again, at the bottom of that same paragraph, one, two, three, four, five lines up from the bottom. There's a semicolon after the word. It says, "Efforts used." And there should be a comma there. Let me see. I do have one more on page four. It's one, two, three, four. It's the fourth full paragraph down from the top. That paragraph starts with the name Connie, but it's in the second to last line, should read, "She asked that decision support," not "supported," "support life and well-being." That word should be hyphenated. And that's all I have right now.
I have one thing on page five that I would like corrected. In the second paragraph, it's Ray Cruz Solano, the last name, as C-R-U-Z for zebra, hyphen S-O-L-A-N-O. We have a motion to approve noting all the corrections that have been suggested.
I will move, Madam Chair, again. This is, this is Commissioner Wolman to approve the minutes with the, of, as, as, with the corrections as presented, sorry. It's the minutes of September 15th, 2020.
All right, we have a motion made by Commissioner Wolman. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Sabe. I second that.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reynolds, I guess I just went ahead and called for the vote. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's quite all right. Well, move on to the study session items then. The public is invited to listen to the billboards and off-premise signs study session this evening. The item is not a public hearing, so no public comments will be taken.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. The item before you tonight is regarding billboards and off, billboards and electronic message centers. The staff and the Board of County Commissioners have been working on this county-initiated application to amend the land development code to include new language and requirements for the provisions of billboards and other off-premise signs in unincorporated Arapahoe County, including the conversion of existing billboards and other off-premise signs to an electronic message center. Currently, in Arapahoe County, there are 13 billboards or signs that we identify as billboards. All of those billboards in the county that exist today are currently non-conforming in a sense that most of them do not, I don't think any of them have used by special review permits on file, and there are a few of them that do not meet the requirements of our current code as far as setbacks from residential zoned property. So, we, staff and the Board of County Commissioners recommend developing regulations that will prohibit any new billboard and conversion of any existing static billboard, which is those billboards that, that you typically see that people have to go up and change. They're not electronic at all. And then staff recommends removing the existing provisions in the code that would allow other off-premise signs. The draft regulations will also eliminate the use by special review process that our code currently requires. This is a requirement that the legal team kind of looked into, and it, it's not consistent with the First Amendment, so we do need to make some changes to update the code regardless of whether we want billboards or not. We need to revise the process to, to approve or deny these types of signs. Over the last about year and a half, staff has provided a lot of information to the Board of County Commissioners. Staff researched 20 jurisdictions. We also received input from industry representatives and CDOT, because CDOT does have a say in a number of billboards if they're located off CDOT roadways. We've held eight study sessions with the Board of County Commissioners, and we are in the process of drafting regulations that are not ready at this time, but we do have a good idea of what those will look like. So tonight, we're requesting feedback from the Planning Commissioners on these proposed regulations, and following this meeting, we will go back to the board with our draft regulations, the Planning Commissioners' input, and then we will move forward with scheduling a public, or move forward with outside referrals for our draft regulations, and then holding a planning, a public hearing at the Planning Commission, as well as a public hearing at the Board of County Commissioners. So why did this kind of come to light? A number of people have requested to convert some of the existing billboards to the electronic message centers, and we just kind of found that our code requires currently a five-minute dwell time, and that's something that a lot of the industry reps wanted to see decreased, as well as clarification of how we convert these existing static billboards to electronic message centers. Of the 13 billboards that exist in the county today, two of them are electronic message centers. That was something that was done in the past with an interpretation from somebody who's no longer with Arapahoe County that thought that was just kind of a trade-off. After speaking with some staff members, we determined that an electronic message center did increase the intensity of a billboard, so we thought that just allowing somebody to come in with a building permit, permit for those types of transitions was not something that staff felt comfortable with. We wanted to at least get some input from Planning Commissioners or Board of County Commissioners. So that kind of spurred this amendment. In May of 2019, the Board of County Commissioners adopted a six-month moratorium on the acceptance of applications of this type. Prior to that moratorium, or the board adopting that moratorium, two applications did come in for, one of them, both of them are for new billboards, both of them including electronic message centers. So we will still continue to process those. Those, those two applications are under review right now and are waiting for responses from the applicant. It is from the same applicant, so we'll move forward with those accordingly. But I just wanted you to be aware that we do have two current billboard applications in right now. Like I said, we held a number of study sessions with the Board of County Commissioners. Some of the first study sessions included a presentation from CDOT. On, so the board and staff could better understand what their regulations were and how they played into any kind of county regulations that may be adopted. And then we, staff also presented some safety impacts on, or safety research about conversion of electronic message centers. When we were looking into that, we really did find that the, the information out there was pretty inconclusive. We found that depending on who sponsored the survey, the results were a little bit different, so. And, and in fact, every road, every driver, every billboard location is different, so it's really kind of hard to drill down on, are electronic message boards safe or do they make drivers more distracted? It was really inconclusive in the research that we did. In April of 2020, the board looked at providing billboard overlay districts, which would essentially provide these corridors that billboards would be allowed if the property was zoned B3, B4, B5, or I1 or I2. We looked into those areas. The board directed staff that they didn't want to see any billboards, new billboards or conversion of existing static billboards to electronic message centers in the urban area. So we moved forward with removing the urban area from those billboard overlay districts and continued to look at three corridors in eastern Arapahoe County that could potentially allow billboards if the property was zoned B or I. We've had a number of extensions on the moratorium because things, a few things have come up, but I really think we're making some progress here. In August, no, earlier in June, the Board of County Commissioners asked us to research and provide a survey to see if, you know, billboards in the eastern part of the county were something that citizens wanted to see. In August, the end of August, we provided the, we, I should start, okay. We, we provided a survey to the residents who lived within 600 feet of all of those corridors on both sides of the roadway. And we came back to the board and provided the survey data, and we found that more than two-thirds, 79% of the survey respondents were opposed to allowing new billboards along all three proposed billboard overlay zones in the A1 and AE zone district. And then more than half of the respondents, 64% of them, suggest that new billboard should be prohibited countywide. After we brought that information to the Board of County Commissioners, staff received direction to draft regulations that would prohibit new billboards countywide, as well as prohibit the conversion of static billboards to electronic message centers. Staff is prepared to go to a study session later this month at the board and provide them with our draft regulations as they directed us to. And the most recent moratorium extension allows for extension of the moratorium till January 7th of 2021. So staff is hoping that we can get these regulations approved, I mean, reviewed and provide input from outside referral, as well as industry representatives, the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners prior to that January 7th, 2021 date. If that doesn't happen, staff will likely request another extension. So the draft regulations that we currently have right now, like I said, would prohibit billboards and the conversion of electronic message centers in unincorporated Arapahoe County. The regulations would define what a billboard is by the size of the sign and its proposed location relative to roads and highways, without a reference to content of the sign, as, as some current court cases have determined that on and off-premise signs is just not, is not the best route to go when you're writing sign language or sign code. The draft regulations would define billboards as any sign that is larger than what we allow as a monument sign, and that would be any sign that's larger than 48 square feet in sign area and any sign that per face, 48 square feet per face, and then any sign that exceeds six feet in height. And that is what the code currently allows for, say, a commercial business. That is our typical sign for a monument sign. So the, like I mentioned, the draft language was not prepared at this time, but the intent of our draft language is to remove the distinction between on and off-premise signs, as well as define a billboard as anything larger than what we consider a monument sign and prohibit the conversion for electronic message centers. Please note that individual businesses will still be permitted to have electronic message center signs per our code, but what the information we received from the board is that they don't want to see them to the extent of a billboard. So say if there is a restaurant that would like a sign, there's a certain percent of their monument sign that cannot exceed 48 square feet and six feet in height, and a certain percentage of that sign is permitted to be an electronic message center. Currently, our code allows a five-minute, or requires a five-minute dwell time. In our regulations right now, we're, we're looking to reduce that five minutes to one minute. So those electronic message centers that are permitted on monument signs would be able to get more messages across in a shorter period of time. I have a map of, you know, the proposed billboards, proposed billboard corridors that we had talked about, but if you're interested in seeing that, other than that, I stand for any questions that you may have.
Do you have a way to show?
Yeah, I'm getting this. Are you sure you want to share? Something is being shared in the live event right now. Anything you share will replace it. I didn't think anybody was sharing anything. Does anybody have objection to me sharing my screen?
Yeah, go ahead and share.
Okay. So this map here indicates the three corridors. So when staff was looking at this, we determined these corridors based off, one, the comprehensive plan. This is the urban boundary, urban area, or urban growth boundary identified in the comprehensive plan. And that was the direction we got from the board was, you know, they didn't want to see any billboards within the urban area, so we used this line here that I'm running over as a, a starting point. We proposed I-70 because it is a high traffic, or highly trafficked route. And then we also proposed Quincy because there were a number of parcels on Quincy that had the zoning that we were looking for, which was that industrial or business zoning. And it also is highly trafficked. And then we also were looking at other options, and we determined that Kiwell Bennett would be a good north-south route because in our transportation plan, it does expect that this, this route will, you know, get a lot more traffic in coming years. So we provided the Board of County Commissioners with these three proposed billboard corridor routes. When we went to them earlier this year, there was some question as whether this is something that the residents actually wanted. So we did do a postcard, which I have a copy here, and like I said, we sent that out to residents who were within 600 feet of that corridor on both sides. We see, we received a pretty good response rate on that. I think it was, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we received a response rate that made staff feel comfortable about the information we were getting, and we asked the residents to answer a number of questions, and a summary of the results was attached and can be found on the agenda. But after hearing that, the board decided that that was something they were no longer interested, and they directed staff to draft regulations that did not include any new billboards allowed in the county.
Are you done, Kat?
Yes, I am. If I, if you have any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
All right, well, we will go over, I have an echo. I will name each commissioner, and you can ask any question. Commissioner Brockelman?
I'm here. Okay. It's not really a question, but of all the stuff that I've seen here, Kat, with, you know, your pie charts and stuff, it looks like there were 134 responses on this, and it's a pretty overwhelming response that nobody wants anything to do with any of this. Is that kind of where the county commissioners came in and said, "Get rid of everything," basically? Lock it down? Based upon these responses?
Kat, you're muted. You were the source of the echo earlier, so you were muted.
Sorry about that. I would say that is, after the Board of County Commissioners received that information, they really kind of thought that that would be adding benefit to people out east who had AE and A1-owned property, who might be able to supplement some of their expenses with the billboards. But after hearing that response, I think the board definitely took a different direction that, and kind of noticed that maybe that wasn't as desirable as they might have thought.
Commissioner Brockelman, are you?
Yeah, that, that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Nothing for me right now.
Commissioner Saul?
I was just going to clarify. So the existing ones, would they allow them to go to the electronic?
Currently, the direction we received from the Board of County Commissioners, as well as our draft regulations right now, that is not something that we would permit. The existing billboards right now, they are all non-conforming, but, and they, they are permitted to do, you know, regular maintenance as long as it's not over 50% of the cost of the sign. But the Board of County Commissioners has directed staff to draft regulations that do not allow the conversion.
That was it.
Okay. Commissioner Sabe?
Yes, I think this is probably a question for Bob, but in the background here, it talks about the First Amendment strictly limits the county's ability to regulate signs as a matter of freedom of speech. And could you, Bob, could you elaborate on that? It's just, I, I just want to understand how that works along with the, the draft, the language that's being drafted to prohibit the billboards?
Sure, sure. First Amendment law in the, in the area of, of sign code and sign regulation has been evolving over the past few years, starting, or it got spurred largely with the Reed versus Town of Gilbert case out of Arizona. It was a United States Supreme Court case. And sort of the big takeaway from that case was that any, any, it really affirmed that government cannot regulate the content of signs or including advertising devices. And there, one of the things that sort of came out of that case is if you have to read the sign to know whether it complies with the code, then it's probably a First Amendment violation. So that kind of steered us toward looking at the content. You know, when that case, when that Reed case came out, a lot of jurisdictions were left with sign codes that were now questionable under, under federal, you know, First Amendment law. So we took a look at, at our code, and we did some preliminary correction type stuff. One of the evolving areas from that case is the on-off-premise sign distinction. So the argument goes that if you have to, an off-premise sign is, is generally defined as one that advertises something that's not available on the property on which the sign is located. So if you have to read the sign to know that what's, what it's selling is available or not available on that property, some cases are going to say that that's content regulation. So it's actually not the case in the Colorado district yet, but other federal districts are going that way, and we're anticipating that. So one of the reasons, you know, our old billboard definition was that, you know, it's an off-premise sign that is of certain dimension. We're working on amending that, that to make it more of a, a sign of a certain dimension that's oriented towards a road to advertise to travelers on the road. But that, we believe, will take the, the content issue out of it. Another issue we're, we're dealing with is the USR provision. One of the, one of the requirements of First Amendment law is that any permit or license requirement for a First Amendment activity is considered a prior restraint, and it's subject to strict scrutiny under, under federal law and federal case law. And so generally, that means you're going to have to have a compelling government interest, narrowly tailored to serve that government interest. And one of the issues too is, are USR standards are more a zoning standard with things like compatibility? So that's not very objective. In the First Amendment area with, you can regulate time, place, and manner generally of something, but you certainly can't regulate content. So those are the two primary things. Now, as Kat mentioned too, you know, we were getting, we've had this USR process in place since, I'm not sure when, but we haven't, to my understanding, ever had anyone apply for a USR for a billboard. All the existing billboards we have are grandfathered in from prior to those regulations. And so now with, when planning, starting to get people saying, "Well, you know, we've got these existing billboards, and we'd like to modernize them to make the, the electronic message board." That sort of led us initially into the, into the moratorium and looking at whether, and how we would implement electronic message board billboards, which led us into looking at the USR, and as the case law has been evolving with, with the on-premise, off-premise distinction, that sort of explains how our moratorium kept getting extended to where we are now. And then generally, you know, I think there's been just some concern about billboards generally with our Board of County Commissioners. of County Commissioners, and they wanted us to take a hard look at what we can do. So we came up with some options, you know, the billboard district that Kat had mentioned, and, you know, maybe trying to allow for some billboards out east in ag areas. So it's where we are now is, is, based on the latest direction of the board is, they're not really interested in new billboards within the county, so we're looking at how we can, we can come up with regulation which will prevent those. Any new billboards, allow the existing billboards as non-conforming uses, under our non-conforming use code. And then I think there's been some consideration on electronic message boards. At this point, the direction is no on electronic message boards. I, that was kind of long-winded.
No, thank you, though. I, I wanted to get some background on it, so I appreciate that. And that's the only question I have at this time.
And this is Jason Reynolds. Real quick, just to touch on something Bob said, he, he mentioned time, manner, and place, and that tends to be the safest way to regulate signs, if you're interested in creating sign regulations. You can regulate the time that the sign is illuminated. For example, the message board must be shut off between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. You can regulate the manner of the sign. Are you allowed to have a 50-foot sign, a 20-foot sign, a 6-foot sign? Does the sign have to have a certain, you know, design features, and then place of the sign, where it's located on a property? And none of those require you to actually read the sign to determine whether it's a proper sign under the code.
Thank you. Does Commissioner Womack have any questions?
I do. I have a question for Kat. Hey, Kat, has any business interest commented on this to you? I mean, I know that you reached out to the property owners, but I was curious whether there had been any business input, you know, maybe, you know, from, you know, someone along that corridor, okay, a business interest along that corridor.
Like I mentioned earlier, we two, we do have two applications in right now. So those applicants are moving forward in the process and have provided some insight. And like you mentioned, we have reached out to the billboard industry representatives, as well as CDOT zoning and some other internal agencies or department. But at this time, we want to get our draft regulations are kind of more in a concrete state before we send them out to the referral agencies. But we do have a list of referral agencies that we are sending, will be sending these draft regulations out to. So I haven't received any yet, but I do anticipate comments from some of those people who will receive the referral.
Okay, great. I, I was just curious whether, you know, through the grapevine, some business entities had responded prior, you know, prior to you, you know, doing the more formal kind of outreach efforts.
And right now, as our code is drafted, there are only a few parcels that would actually meet the requirements as our code is drafted, with the, the proper zoning and the setbacks from residential. So it really hasn't been a huge topic of concern as far as I, I see it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I do think the billboard industry is keeping an eye on what we're doing. We've had a number of study sessions, as Kat had mentioned, and those are public, and although we've, some of them have been done remotely due to COVID, I do believe that industry has been, been paying attention.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Lassiter? I'm sorry. Was that Commissioner Womack?
No, I just, I just said thank you, you know, because that, that, obviously, I'm interested in whether there was any kind of informal stakeholder expression. So thank you, Bob. I mean, I'm sure that they're going to stay on top of it, but once, you know, rules are proposed, that they actually have an opportunity to react to.
It's been kind of a moving target for him right now.
Gee, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't imagine that.
All right. Commissioner Lassiter, do you have any comments or questions?
Nope, no questions or comments at this time.
Okay. I would just like to get clarification on the current, the existing 13 billboards. Is there any way, I guess, I feel like the questionnaire, the survey was very clear-cut, that people don't want billboards, billboards. So what happens to the ones that are, they're non-conforming, but they're existing? Is there a way to get them gone?
So when we first started this process, we looked into a number of different jurisdictions, like I mentioned, and we did bring up to the Board of County Commissioners about possibly incorporating something in our new draft regulations that would act as kind of a trade-off. The city of Centennial has done something similar in recent years. They had two billboards in their, in their jurisdiction, and both of them were static. And the way that they approached their billboard regulations were that a billboard could be converted to an electronic message center if another billboard was removed, or kind of a trade-off like that. Because the intent of a non-conforming sign is, you know, in hopes that one day it, it'll go away. Billboards are, it is a pretty lucrative business. So my, I guess my take on it would be that a lot of these billboards that are existing and non-conforming, they'll continue to do maintenance and upgrades that meet the requirements of a non-conforming use, but will likely remain if they're unable to convert to existing, or convert to a static message board.
Okay. Thank you. I just think the state of Vermont got this one figured out a long time ago, because they prohibit all billboards, and it makes it much more beautiful. I think the monument signs can be a problem too. Anyway, I guess we've all had a chance to answer, and I think, Kat, the chart you included that showed what the other jurisdictions were doing, it was very helpful. There seems to be a trend to no billboards.
Yes, and we did present that information early on, but the Board of County Commissioners wanted to ensure that if there was an interest in, you know, this in the county, that we, we looked into it. So it's been a long time coming to this conclusion that we don't want to allow new billboards or the conversion, but there's still some more work to be done.
Very good. Are there any additional questions from any of the commissioners?
I actually have one question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, please.
Just, or just thought, but does any of this language or anything that you're putting together have anything to do with mobile billboards?
It's my understanding that mobile billboards are currently prohibited in Arapaho County right now, because those are considered a vehicle sign. So there's some complications with enforcing mobile billboards, as you know, as the name implies, that they're constantly moving. So as the code is written today, we do not allow vehicle signs. So the new draft regulation does not further address that.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else? Okay, I guess, do you need a, I think there's a consensus that we agree with what, what you're doing, Kathleen. So is that all you need?
Yeah, moving forward, I'll be preparing a staff report, or BSR, for a study session with the board later this month. I believe it's the third week of October. And I'll provide some insight on questions asked by the planning commissioners and the, a few statements that says, you know, generally, the, the planning commission was in favor of the, the, you know, the concept of what our draft regulations would look like.
You are headed in the right direction. Thank you. All right. If there are no other comments, we will bring this study session to a close and conclude it for tonight. And our next meeting is October 20th. Were there any other staff announcements?
None from Jason?
Well, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Next time, I hope we see you, Jamie.
Yeah, hopefully I won't get triple, quadruple invitations to like me.